Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye, this honorable commissioners meeting of the Grand Canyon Tennessee is now in session. The honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee, and this honorable court. At this time Commissioner Mike Hooks will lead us in prayer, after which please remain standing for the pledge of the American flag.
Father, we come to see the Lord with concerned hearts for one of our coworkers, Lord, and family, Lord. We want to lift up Super Jack tonight. First and foremost, Lord, if you just lay a healing hand upon his body. Lord, if you just comfort him, Lord, through the pain, Lord, and the treatments, Lord, that lie ahead. Lord, in his sweet mother and father, Lord, God, we pray, Lord, that sending, that you put your arms around him, let him know that you're not. Lord, that Father God, that Father, that only real strength comes from you. Lord, and I know that you're willing to provide it. Father, all you said we needed to do was ask, and we shall receive. Lord, we're asking as a body here to see them, as a community. Lord, we're asking for this family. Lord, that you just touch them. Father, and we pray, God, for this meeting. We pray, Lord, that Father, the business to be conducted here to see them will only help or count him, and that our states, God. Father, Lord, and these one here that has a need, Father, we pray for them. Father, God is well. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like you, you may be seated. If you have a cell phone, please turn it down.
Pastor Lurt, all show present. All right, at this time approval for the minutes of our December 12th meeting. I hear a motion. Air second. All right, Mr. Hooks.
Nothing further.
Mr. Dove.
Nothing further.
Any comment? Any questions? All right, call vote. Mr. Berry with motion.
Yes, sir. And been told there's some kind of a ballgame on tonight, so we'll, it would be brief. Just on number one, 11, 12, 14, and 15, all dealing with Oak Ridge and power and stuff. Again, we just need to be cautious of what's happening up there, and we've got, we've got the energy solutions with the railroad, with other issues up there, and we just, we just need to be aware of what's happening so that we can, we can respond and respond accordingly. You may want to answer that a little later, Mr. Smith. Number six, on the armed uniform guards in courtroom, it says, we're not in compliance with the state, and there was discussion about this, but no action taken. And if you look at, if you look at the chart, there's only about three counties in the state that don't have that. And I guess if we were to have anything happen in the courtroom, Mr. Attorney, I think, I think that would, that would come back to the homeless one, and if we, if we don't have that, and we've taken no action, and all the three or four counties in the state have that. So I would just say that's something we probably need to look at. Number eight, I just, I bring to you, just as an Asian carp committee, we met, and this is another situation. This may be the number one problem that's facing our county with the Asian carp, silver carp, coming downstream and coming into our lakes. There's a, it's about a $915 million impact on the five counties. So I would just, I'd urge you to stay tuned to that, and we're probably going to have to make sure that our congressmen and legislators are all on board with us trying to convince TWRA, TBA, and US Fisheries about where we need to put our barriers and stuff. So I would just ask you to stay tuned with that. Other was, on number 18, I'd asked the county attorney to give us, to just give us a roadmap of what we needed to do, if and when. We wanted to increase the sales tax from nine and a half percent to nine and three quarters percent, which, which a lot of other counties are doing. If you just looked at, you know, on $150, it would be from 1423 to 1463. $40, it's 380 to 390, so not a lot of money, but we're sending that, we're sending that money to the state now. There's all kinds of options for us. We can put it to the schools, we can put it to capital, we can put it to general fund, whatever they want to do that. But I would ask the legislative committee if they want to look into that. This was not a, not a recommendation or anything on my part. I just was asking the, the way we have to do it, and we have to approve it and then send it to a, to a referendum. So I would just, I would just ask you if the legislative committee wants to act on that. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Gannon.
Nothing further, sir.
All right, no other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, you've noticed on the agenda, it reads, number eight is the solid waste committee, and that's actually Asian carp committee. Mr. Berry mentioned that as he went through those, but just making sure everybody understood.
Any other questions? All right, call vote. All right, majority pass. All right, notaries.
Notaries. Bonnie Angus, Linda Carter, Teresa Jackson, Barbara Lox, Jessica Ann Osgood, and Sarah E. Stewart.
All right, motion by Bell, second by Wilson. Mr. Bell.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
I'm in pro.
I call vote.
Everybody, we're having a theater issue.
It's a game, isn't it?
We got a fraud.
All right, motion passed, majority. All right, hearing of delegations. At this time, we'll, here, please use three minutes, but if you want to address the collective legislative body, please do so at this time.
Hey, good evening. I'm Justin Snow, the interim president to run the lights. It's good to see everybody, happy new year. I'll share briefly tonight two or three points, and the first thing I want to share is that Wade and I, about five and a half years ago, met with some Y-12 representatives out of their complex, and they shared with us this vision of an emergency response training facility. It would be unique that it would offer training like no other United States. It would uniquely train our first responders, it would provide a bolstered impact to our community, and I'm pleased to announce that we kept the ribbon on that facility this morning. And we had great support from this body. I think we had probably more than half of our county commissioners, Superintendent Jacobson was there, Lindsey Stevens was there, so I think we banked on about 50 people coming, and we had about 150, so. And I can personally say that it was a privilege and honor the past four years to work with the IDB, and Y-12, and Lawrence Wood on the design, construction, and now the operation and maintenance of that facility.
It came in under budget, too, is that correct?
You know what? It came in on time and under budget, October 30th. So hats off to Mr. Jim Palmer, the chairman of IDB, he did a phenomenal job leading that project, and it was an honor and privilege just to be a part of it.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else want to address the commission?
Real quick, I want to pass around some invitations. If you haven't let me know yet, or Jennifer Brown know, we're having a legislative breakfast next Monday, January 16th, at eight o'clock at our building, run the lights downstairs. Breakfast will be served. Senator Yeager and Kent, not Kent County, but new Representative Monty Fritz will be present, so they'll get brief remarks on, before they head off to session, and then they'll provide an opportunity for anybody that wants to ask a question. So if you haven't done so already, RSVP, and I hope to see everybody next Monday. Any questions for me? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. I have a request about my handicapped daughter, and that's how a lot of handicapped people in Rockwood is, Rockwood City Council meetings, it may be happening all over, but there are a lot of people that, especially ladies, it seems like, that are handicapped, and I would love to get into a swimming pool.
In your swimming.
Swimming pool, I know. I don't think that exists in the county here, but they have them in YMCA's and different cities, Knoxville, and Lenoir County, Cleveland, even Sparta. My daughter said, even, I said, they can't put one of those in Rome County. My daughter said, well, they have one in Sparta, and that's, the Spartan population is about the same as Rome County. So I would like to ask that somebody would invite the YMCA to maybe put a, put a building in Midtown with the pool. That would, that would make a lot of elderly people happy to be able to do water aerobics and things of that nature. And thank you for that part. Now, part two, ready for the big dogs tonight. TCU, I like to, I like to see, I like to see them win. I'm one of the people that go for the underdogs, and I'd like to see, I'd just like to see that happen. But anyway, you know, we get the wonderful opportunity that we're probably going to get it back here in the National Anthem, Star Spangled Banner. Back, I've got a hymn book here, and I will sing to you, okay, I promise. Back in 1948, this hymn book was copyrighted, and before this, it was called, "Who Say Can You See?", the name of the song. I didn't realize that. I always thought it was the Star Spangled Banner, but somewhere along the line, it changed in a, anyway, we always hear the first verse, and if I wanted to do the second three verses real quick, because we rarely get to hear them. On the shore dimly seen through the mist of the deep, where the boats haunting host and dread silence reposes, what is that which the breeze or the towering steep, as it pitfully blows, half concealed, half disclosed? Now it catches the gleam of the morning's first beam, and full glory reflected now shines on the stream, to the Star Spangled Banner, a long made wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave. And where is that band that so bondingly swore? At the havoc of war and the battle's confusion? A home and a country shall leave us no more. Their blood has washed out, their foul footsteps pollution. No refuge could save the harrowing enslaved from the terror flight or the gloom of the grave. And the Star Spangled Banner and triumphed up wave, for the land of the free and the home of the brave. May I do the last verse? Thank you. Oh, thus be it ever, when free men shall stand between their loved homes and the war's desolation. Blessed with victory and peace, may the heaven rescued land. Praise the power that hath made and preserved us in this.
Sewer system transfer at the Rome County Regional Business and Technology Park, and correspondent 17 is a summary of where that is, or if you read it, where it is not. But anyway, I can go over that with you, or I can answer questions if you have any questions about it, wherever you prefer. Any questions at all?
Are we any closer to knowing what the holdup is?
Well.
Or why?
Well, first of all, there's two problems. First of all, there's an issue as to whether we can legally enforce the agreement, because our agreement was with Lenore City Utilities Board, but this park is actually in the jurisdiction of Watts Bar Utility District. At the last meeting, which was before the pandemic, there were some county officials and some representatives of Lenore City Utility District, and some representatives of the Watts Bar Utility District, and some representatives of the Industrial Development Board, which owns the majority of the property in development. And it was agreed that there would be a plan of transfer that would be drafted by Lenore City Utility Board concerning the proposed agreement between Lenore City Utility Board and Watts Bar Utility District that would allow LCUB to process the sewage from the park legally. And that never, to my knowledge, has never transpired. But that's the, that's the one thing that has to be resolved, is LCUB has to get the, an agreement from Watts Bar to operate in that area. Now, there was another issue. The contract that we signed with LCUB in 1999 stated that LCUB would be able to process 750 gallons per day of discharge from the park. And when we met in 2019, they were not able to process that much at that time, and they had requested a reduction. And LCUB, from what I recall, and the Industrial Development Board had agreed on a reduction and an increase over a period of time, because it's not producing that much at this time. That was to be part of this transfer plan that LCUB was supposed to draft, so we could present to you and the other boards. That has never happened. So my suggestion is that we bring these parties together again, just to see where we are with it and what can be done before anything else is done. And that's what I would recommend.
I would ask that you be present as well. Definitely be present. I don't know what else feels about it, but I think what we need, our lawyer there, you're just not reading minutes, you see it.
Well, I was there at the meeting, it was so long ago, I forgot what happened, but there was a recording, so I listened to the recording. But really, whatever is done, the Industrial Development Board needs to be a part of it, because they're the ones affected by it, because they own the bulk of the land in the park.
So who's processing the waste now? LCUB?
LCUB is processing it, but still by law, they have to have an agreement with Watts Bar to process it. And to my knowledge, that's never happened, or if it has, I've never seen it. But that's, that's the issue that the county has, is we made an agreement with LCUB, but the park's technically not in LCUB's jurisdiction to provide utilities.
But it's because our park, they was, they was able to move their sewers further on down toward the interstate, and allowed them to build that truck stop that's bringing them all kinds of sales tax revenue. So I mean, they, we need, do need to get a meeting of the, the parties involved, we need to get it set up and just worked out.
Well, that's, that's something you may want to, as a body, instruct us to do, is to try to facilitate that meeting.
All right, Mr. Brackett, your next.
I guess my question in reading, if I'm not mixed up on this, wouldn't that $750,000 that was at some point paid out? Have we paid for something that we're?
Okay, the agreement required the county to pay $850,000 toward costing the construction. I mean, I, this was in 1999, so I don't have any independent knowledge as to what the county's paid and what the county's not paid.
So we're kind of in that limbo of, we've paid, we've paid for something, but not really what we had in writing, or, I mean, that's the confusion I have on.
Well, the way it was left in 2019, when we had this meeting, was that, it was my understanding that the infrastructure in the park had been constructed. Now, there were issues between 1999 and 2019, when we met, concerning the construction and the operation and so on and so forth, but it was my understanding from when we met in 2019, the infrastructure had been completed, but LCUB did not have the capacity to treat 750 gallons a day. And the park was not producing anywhere near 750 gallons per day, and was not anticipated to produce that amount at any time in the near future.
So as a body, basically, I mean, it's been 10, 11, 12, it may have been way too long, so whatever we need to, to get together, whatever board, or whatever, I mean, we need to ride this horse, it's, it's been keeping down the road way too long.
Well, I, I think that, I think that you may want to, as a body, instruct the county executive to request a meeting among LCUB, Watts Bar Utility District, and the Industrial Development Board, so we can see why nothing progressed after 2019.
I'm all for it. That's our line.
Wait just a minute, we go to?
Just, just a little background, we did pay, we paid $1.2 million to run a sewer line from, from Lenore City's wastewater plant to our industrial park. The 750,000 gallons is reserved for Rome County. And you say, what difference does that make? It makes a lot of difference, because when Lenore City gets to 80% of capacity of their sewer plant, they have to build a new plant. They have to reserve our 750,000 gallons. So we, we had, we had a little leverage at that time, and that's why we put 750,000 gallons of reserve initially. So what we did, basically, was 321 was sold by the acre before we put a sewer plant, our sewer line down through there, and that sold by the foot. That's, that's what we did. We allowed the truck stop to go in at, at the interchange there, because we put a sewer line into our place. And I think, Counselor, at the time that we initially did this, I don't think Watts Bar was in the picture, because it was, it was, it was East Rome County water at that time, and then as, as we moved along and let things go, Watts Bar took over East Rome County Water System. Therefore, it was, it was a game changer for, for Lenore City, because Watts Bar said, wait a minute, that's ours. So now you got to negotiate a price for Lenore City and Watts Bar, because Lenore City's going to have to pay Watts Bar some, some kind of a fee. I, I think what we can do as, as, as a board to, the only leverage we have is to go back and say, we rescind our 750,000 gallons reserve to 250, and, and, and put that back in, put that back into equation, because it's probably going to force them to have to build a new sewer plant. Then we can get them to the table and do whatever we want to do. But the 750,000 gallons was the leverage that we needed and had for a long, long time, and that's why they want to see it reduced to 250. So I'm not sure when Watts Bar actually took over East Rome County water, but that might be something we want to check as well, because our first agreement with, with Lenore City would have been without, it would have been with East Rome County, which, which had no capacity. And, and Watts Bar can, they have no sewer there.
Well, first of all, the agreement that I'm working off of, East Rome County's not a party to it, Watts Bar's not a party to it, it's an agreement between Rome County and LCUB.
Okay.
So, and I don't know what the status was in 1999, because I wasn't here then.
Okay.
But you have a state law that you're having to contend with, that says that a utility district has the exclusive authority to provide utilities within its jurisdiction. And Watts Bar is providing sewer services somewhere within its jurisdiction. Now, there's a process under the utility district law, where if Watts Bar is not able to meet the needs that we have, there can be a hearing in front of the county executives, somebody has to file a petition, county executive can't file it, and county executive can make a determination as to whether their jurisdiction should be changed or modified, and then that can be appealed to the court system. But I think before you do all that, you need to get the players together, and let's see why this has not progressed forward. Because like I say, we just, we own the infrastructure, and we want to get rid of it. But whatever happens affects the Industrial Development Board, so they need to be involved in it, because they're going to have to live with whatever happens. So I think the first step is to call this meeting.
Okay, should, should we, should we go back to the 750,000 gallons to, for a little leverage to get to, to get to where we need to be?
I don't know, and that's something that I don't want to talk about in an open meeting anyway, if you're talking about leverage or giving up leverage. But I think you need to get the players back together, and I think the Industrial Development Board is the biggest stakeholder, because they own all the land, or the majority of it, that is subject to this agreement.
Okay, then I would, I would hold my motion to, to go back to 750,000, yeah, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. President.
Yeah, we are at the finish line. We've been at the finish line for a long time. All that remains is for their attorney to provide the document that, for the agreement that we've all agreed on. Everything's done. They just have to get the document back to us, and it's been well over two years since we were at that point. So to move this, well, we've asked for that meeting, a meeting you all mentioned, we've asked for that meeting, and there's no beating on the books right now. I, I would, I hate to put you on the spot here, Counselor, but I would recommend that we ask our attorney to write a letter to LCUB expressing this body's concern for the delay in responding in a, in a timely manner to, to get this agreement back to all parties, so that we can meet. Because until that document comes forward, and their, their attorney has said he's finished with it, then there's nothing to meet about, unless we start from scratch, and I, I'm not going to advise that, because we're there.
If, if we're going to send a letter, let's send it to all the parties involved, not just LCUB.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I guess my next question would be then, since there's no agreement in place that has been signed, then, then we're still at the 750,000 gallons a day reserved then, right?
We have not agreed to reduce anything.
Okay, so, so that's still in effect, so maybe that's?
There was an agreement between the Industrial Development Board and LCUB that was discussed in our meeting that took place in 2019. Now, you would still have to approve that if that, if, if there is a reduction, you would have to approve that. We've not agreed to reduce this 750,000, but.
Well, I think the Industrial Development Board did.
Well, there's no agreement. There's no, there's, there's no paper, nothing has been. Well, there's no agreement. There's no, there's, there's no paper, nothing has been before you or their board.
In principle, yeah.
In, in principle, there was, I know there were officials from each entity that met and discussed a proposed resolution. Nothing was ever drafted and nothing was ever submitted to any of the boards or the commission for approval.
And since we had that meeting, they, they have new attorneys as well, so that's probably another whole other, is, is the attorneys that, that actually we met with or no longer there either. Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Goss.
Uh, Mr. Levy. It, could, could the county be held under any kind of violations knowing that LCUB has got it and were actually, could be responsible for it? I mean, is that something that could occur down the road or...
Commissioner, I really don't understand your question.
Is there any safer sewage use and stuff? I mean, you know, how we've had, you know, some issues here. I mean, is there anything, any kind of litigation that, that we could end up in on our side?
I would think that that issue is strictly between the LCUB and Watts Bar Utility District.
Mr. Chairman, motion. Motion. Make a motion that our county attorney send a letter to all parties that are involved. CC and county executive. Try to set up such a meeting to get all of this earned out. I think that's part of our county attorney's advice.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
Listen.
Go ahead and wrap this discussion up. David, Commissioner Bell.
I'm fine, I'll wrap it up.
All right, Mr. Dan.
Nope, I'm good.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the county executive before.
I'm going to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to eliminate about half my report in respect for timeline. Uh, I will say that, that Mr. Berry did mention that there's several points of correspondence regarding happens on the Oak Ridge Reservation. That's very intentional. We are, I think, this commission is, is better positioned to deal with Oak Ridge issues than we ever have been before. There's eight members who either work on the reservation or have worked on the reservation or were with entities on the reservation. So your understanding is, is better than we ever have before. So I want to make sure that I'm keeping you informed of as many perspectives as possible. And that's why you see so many different letters from different entities. You see a broad perspective. Of particular note are issues related to the airport. You've got two issues, you've got the Hall Road and the Railspur. And in that, in those correspondence, you see different perspectives from both. So rather than changing or, or mentioning that, or recommending that we change our position, as we discussed last time, we're really just in an information gathering phase to be, to bring as much information to the table as possible and allow you to make a recommendation if we so choose. Right now, your position, based on a resolution from many years ago, is in support of the airport. And I have no information to bring forward that, that would cause me to recommend anything different at this point. That being said, I want to make sure I keep you informed all along the way. I will say this, that Jeff Smith was recently appointed the interim lab director for Oak Ridge National Lab for UT Patel. Jeff was the champion for the Oak Ridge Airport. And when he retired a couple of years ago, as deputy, he was the only deputy lab director that Oak Ridge National Lab had known under UT Patel's leadership. And when he retired, that project began to experience some challenges. And now that he's back in that role, I think it breathes new life into that project and I think you'll see him get engaged. Just wanted to put that on the table for, for kind of, some of the dynamics involved there. Long-term planning, all of our departments that, that fall under my supervision have submitted their first draft for a long-term plan. We've also received responses back from utilities, or from, from a couple of utilities. Um, another office has sent theirs in. And the city of Harriman will, should complete theirs in the next month or two, I think. So we're starting to get responses in as we make this priority for ours. I just want to let you know that we've seen significant progress on that. In personnel committee, last week, we uncovered a misunderstanding on our life insurance policies that we all have. So if you are, have any concern at all about what your life insurance policy value is currently, please get in touch with Jennifer Suter. We, we are uncovering, are reviewing what the original contract says about that. But we, we determined based on a couple of people who have contacted us with, who had deaths recently in the family that at 65, at age 65, that benefit begins to decrease. And I'm not sure that was the understanding of everybody prior to when we discovered this was an issue. So let Jennifer Suter know, know if you have any questions about what that value might be for you. Finally, I'm meeting with Mayor Jewell in Mex County, Mayor Vincent from Rade County. We're meeting in Decatur on Thursday to discuss Asian car. And what we're trying to do is build a coalition among county mayors in the Eastern Valley. I've also spoken with Mayor Jacobs, Mayor Bradshaw about this. Both of them are on board but can't attend the meeting. So our goal is, again, to, to get all the county mayors to be able to speak with unity on the issue. I know that Representative Fritz spoke with the governor last week about this issue. And so I know that seeds at least been planted there to allow you all to work as a commission and speak with unity too, as you want to work with whoever it is you want to, to get the strongest voice possible. With that, that concludes my report.
Mr. Berry. Mr. Chairman, with, with, with all that's going on with the airport and with all the players, I think it would be really good if we had a workshop with, with officials from Cro-Ad and, and the airport mayor or the city manager of, of Oak Ridge to just, just bring us all up to date on, on what is actually happening. Because I, I thought Cro-Ad was pretty much out, out of the way on, on the railroad and stuff. And maybe even Energy Solutions as to what their plans are for the, for that railroad and, and, and who they have coming on. Just, just to give us a better idea so when we start getting these communications, we, we know, we know what the players are and what, and what the intentions are. So I think that would be...
I'm, I'm trying to meet with all of them individually, but I agree a collective meeting would be good. I'll meet with Carver Rivers next week too.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to ask the county executive if he would be able, Mr. Jennifer, to come up with a scale before we can visually look at it on age group of how this insurance changes and provide it to the commission.
Yeah, we, we haven't sent that out because it was our understanding that the health insurance company was going to send that out to everybody who has it, and none of us have seen that yet. So, but we're going to follow up on that and make sure everybody's...
Thank you.
Mr. Bell.
I'd like to know how many, how many, or you might know, how many different life insurance people we have at the table? Are we just going through one? Or do we have multiple ones throughout the county? I know at one time, a while back, it's been a long time ago, I heard, or I thought somebody had said that we pulled from a lot of different...
Tell me, providers, who provides our coverage? The company's called US Able. It's one, one company that provides our life insurance right now.
For the whole, for the whole county?
Every, all of us, all employees and, and all employees and, and their families if they so choose to cover them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, nothing further? No more questions? All right, we'll move on to special orders. Approval of surety bond in the amount of $100,000 for Diana Mayton for the Office of Interclerk and Master. The air motion, Wilson, taken by Brackett. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Brackett, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Brackett. All right, any discussions?
Just real quick, on, on the, on the bond, this, on the interim, Mr. Chrislow, that's, that was just for a month? Looked like this one was, was... So we got permanent clerk and master now, right? So, so we don't need them, we won't, we won't need them both?
Yeah, this was, this was under agenda and then the second one came pretty shortly after.
So we'll all, we'll, we'll need to vote on both of them, but we'll only end up with one of them in, in effect because one of them won't be entered anymore.
Yeah, one of the second ones already started her job.
Right.
The second one's carrying them on.
Just want to clear that up. And one of them is for, for like a month or so.
All right, any other discussion? Cast a vote. Motion carries the majority. Approval of surety bond in the amount of $100,000 for panel Denise May for the appointed Office of Clerk and Master. Mr. Dan.
Nothing further. This is already in play.
Mr. Bell.
No, nothing.
Any comments? All right, cast a vote.
Motion carries. No zoning resolutions, no old business, going into new business. And give me just one second, guys. I'm just, the internet was down and I didn't get a... No, okay, I've got, I've got, I just got a, uh, wrong county, that's, uh...
All right, here we go. For the budget, uh, Resolution 0123, that's 01, uh, Resolution Electing the Membership for the Budget Committee. Motion by Bell, taken by Travis. Mr. Bell.
Who's on?
Ron Berry, Ben Gann, Mike Hooks, and Ben Wilson. That's all. Mr. Parks.
No.
Any discussion? All right, no discussion, cast a vote. And Resolution 012302, uh, Resolution to Name a Bridge in Honor of Reverend Michael Roddy, and that's Junior Henderson and Greg Ferguson. Mr. Henderson.
Nothing further, just needs to be done.
Mr. Ferguson.
Nothing further, needs to be done.
All right, uh, do you, do you have anything?
They, do you, uh, the, they're back here tonight to come up and see the...
Okay, if you, the two commissioners from that district and the county executive would have the panel members come up and take a check. All right, while you're doing that, I'll, I'll read the actual motion.
Thank you, sir.
If you allow. Uh, Resolution to Name a Bridge in Honor of Reverend Roddy. Whereas the bridge is located on Roddy Lane, whereas Reverend Roddy was a local minister and educator. Reverend Roddy was educated in the Rome County Public Schools, a person of character, and graduated from high school at Woodstock High School in Shelby County, Tennessee. Whereas Reverend Roddy received his undergraduate training and education from the Moyn Owen College in Memphis and Tennessee State University in Nashville. Whereas Reverend Roddy taught elementary school in the Paint Rock and Emmergat Communities of Rome County. Whereas Reverend Roddy also worked in the coal mines as a carpenter. Whereas being called to the ministry, Reverend Roddy served as a pastor of the Little League Baptist Church in Auburn Springs for 31 years and Baseltown Baptist Church in Harriman for 29 years.
That's impressive. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? It's not, we'll call, we'll call it quick, we'll vote it quick, just get a seat. All right, Resolution 12302, or 02 has passed by majority vote. Then 12303, Resolution Operates the County to Apply for a 2023 Communities Development Block Grant. Mr. Wilson.
Uh, this has been through the Budget Committee, has passed unanimously. It's for 100% funding on this. It's on payback. It's for a fire truck. It'll take us approximately about a year to get the money. Uh, but we barely missed this one a couple of years ago, so we're feeling confident that we'll get this one.
All right, Commissioner Henderson.
A nut fur.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, sir. There is, there is a match. 92,125.
Well, this one did have, that's my fault.
All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, call a vote. All right, Resolution passed on majority. All right, Resolution 12304, Resolution Operates the County Executive to Apply for a Solid Waste Infrastructure or Recycling Swiper Grant from the Environmental Protection Agency. Commissioner Wilson.
This has also been through the Budget Committee, passed unanimously. Nothing problem.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, no, it's, it's a much-needed money for the recycling program, solid waste down there, so appreciate it.
Any discussion?
Yes, is there a match?
No.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Call a vote. Majority passed. Resolution 12305 to re, uh, Recognize Insurance Recovery Revenue and to appropriate $35,324 in the sheriff's and juvenile vehicle function. Mr. Wilson.
Uh, this has also been through the Budget Committee and passed unanimously. This is where a sheriff's vehicle was totaled, more than likely totaled out. Uh, the vehicle they needed was no longer in service, so they retrieved the one from the juvenile. They are recouping the money from the insurance agency to replace what, what was taken from the sheriff's department. So it's zeroed out, so there is no money out. It was 35, 324 of those, so they received the money.
All right, Commissioner Bell.
No.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a vote. All right, Resolution 12306, uh, Resolution to Amend the Revenue Expenses in General Plan 101 for the Operations of the DGA Local Health Services. Commissioner Bell.
No.
Mr. Dan.
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, call a vote. Resolution 12307, a Resolution Amending the Solid Waste Sanitation Fund 116 reflecting changes in the revenue expenses estimates for the 2223 fiscal year. Commissioner Henderson.
Nut fur.
Mr. Wilson.
Been through the budget, passed unanimously.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a vote. Majority passed, one-twenty-three-zero-eight, resolution, a resolution amending the recycled landfill, one-twenty-eight, reflecting changes in revenue expenditures for twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Wilson.
Reverb, been through the budget, passed unanimously.
Mr. Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Majority passed, one-twenty-three-zero-nine, resolution amending the highway fund, one-thirty-one, reflecting changes in revenue expenditures estimates for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Mr. Wilson.
Been through the budget committee, passed unanimously. This is reflecting the changes in increasing expenditures that's coming that they've reflected through the year with the rest of the college, stuff like that.
Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. One-twenty-three-ten, resolution amending the joint fixture fund, three-six seven, reflecting changes in the revenue expenditure estimate for twenty-two, twenty-three. I see a air motion. Motion by Bell, Commissioner Bell.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing further, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. One-twenty-three-eleven, resolution amending the Attorney General Fund, three-six four, reflecting changes in the revenue expenditures estimated for twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Wilson.
This has been through the budget committee, passed unanimously. And I think this is the twenty-five thousand dollars that was paid out and to the drug farm. It's a legal action that was done, so they're just marking it up.
All right, Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Majority passed.
Stop chat.
All right, resolution one-twenty-three-twelve. Interfund tax anticipation, no resolution. Guys, this is a long one here. Okay, Commissioner Henderson, motion, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Henderson.
I have nothing further.
Commissioner Wilson, nothing to add. Any comments, any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All right, I think we have a paper copy now of the, the weight of the twelve-day rule. Down here, a motion to waive the twelve-day rule, and the emeritus got it up as well. I know she gets hooked there. First, I hear the, here's the motion to, you guys, here's the look at it. Motion to waive the twelve-day rule, Mr. Berry. Well, I'm sorry, I already see it here in, Mr. Hooks. Mr. Berry, sorry. Mr. Hooks, any discussion?
Yes, vote.
Mr. Berry.
No, it's just, just, uh, needs to be, needs to be done.
Yes, sir. Any discussion? All right, we're just on the twelve-day rule right now, guys. All right, call the vote, no discussion. And this will come in as, all right, passed by majority. So this, resolution is one-twenty-three-thirteen, to allow county clerk to hire additional employees due to the key responsibility unable to perform in person. Down here, a motion.
So. So.
Okay. Down here, it's, all right. Still stuck on the voting tab.
We just, we just need to make sure everybody has a copy of it, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Push motion.
Well, they ain't got no number.
I think we're stuck.
You'll have to voice vote it.
All right. If we're frozen, that time, we'll do a voice vote. So all those in favor?
You'll have to call the rolls, considering money.
Yeah, we need to, we need to make sure everybody has a copy of it.
Do we have?
Chairman.
Did you all, did you all share my copy?
Unless they, unless they won't vote without me, that's.
Anybody need the copy, if they can have this one up there on my desk.
We can make copies, Mr. Chairman, we have to.
We can also read it, too.
Yeah, we can read it.
Well, I've read the first part of it, but. I think, I think majority of people knows what it's for, do they know? Okay.
I just asked the county, do we have to have, do we have to have one make this vote?
You need to be able to read it before you vote on it. I mean, I don't have a copy, I haven't seen it.
So we need one. Let's just get one printed.
Let's just make, let's just make, I've been.
See if I can ask you around a printer.
All right, any discussion? I have the motion by Berry and Hooks for it, so we're basing it right now. While we're waiting on those copies, any discussion before the call?
I just, I just think it's, it's the, Madam Clerk's, where she's, she's got an employee that's, that's, that's unable, unable to work right now. And she's got, she had duties that, her, her replacement is trying to fill. And basically what we're doing is, is we're, we're just, we're just adding employees to the first half.
And who has a second? Mr. Hooks.
Yes.
Any other discussion?
I concur. It's a much needed position, given the situation that we're in. And we're hoping for the best outcome possible. But this is someone that can already step up and step in place. And she's the commissioners here. That's just putting it plain and simple. Without that position, we're locked in how our government forms. I mean, they put it all together, and I'm honored to support this resolution.
Any other discussion?
While they're waiting, Mr. Chairman, I think that the total, the total cost of it was like fifty-five thousand, six hundred dollars for the entire year. Twenty-nine thousand, I think, for this budget year.
Yeah, it's on the second page there.
I think twenty-three, twenty-three thousand this year, the remainder of the year, and then fifty-five total annualized.
Hey, if we could pause there just a second, too, while we've got more time. Unless there's any other discussion on that motion. It was brought to my attention earlier about some concern of the commissioners that their March commission meeting is actually during spring break. And what would it take to get that meeting moved? I know we can only move it on holidays. We automatically move it on holidays. But.
Trip to the beach would probably be pretty good with it.
Well, it would. It'd be much needed for some. And some of them, you know, still have young kids that they want to go to the beach with and stuff.
I make a motion, we move it to the third, third, third Monday, then second.
All right. All those in favor? We will have to notify the newspaper and the citizens of the county.
March twentieth.
So, March twentieth, we're good. See, Alan, that was easy, everyone.
Mr. Attorney. Is it? Was it me? Is it all right if we change it, even though we've voted on our schedule already? Would that do it?
Yeah, you can, you can change the meeting. The majority.
It was okay to do it in fashion?
Yeah, it was okay.
Thank you. All right. Take a moment, I'll give you a minute to read over the resolution there that you have. You got it.
Mr. Chairman, this is it, passed by the budget.
Yes. Yeah, as Mr. Berry said, it did go through budget and passed. All right, any other discussion on this resolution? Madam Clerk. Call the vote.
Bell.
Aye.
Berry.
Aye.
Brackett.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Duff.
Yes.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Gann.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Henderson.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Hooks.
Yes.
Kirby.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Parks.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all so much. We're struggling in our office and my substations haven't been open because of the extra workload. We've not been able to have those offices open. And we hope to get that now. So I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Brackett, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? All right, thank you all. Georgia's already down, we need more. Sweet.